We're here on Game Changes Media Network, Game Changes TV, Star South News. And we are here with the Knight family. How y'all doing?
Good, doing real good.
Doing good.
Doing well.
All right, what's been, what's been going on with you guys lately? Tell me, what's, what's life like for the Knights, Kim and Jerry? I, I mean, I love the house. I mean, did you guys just move here, you know, tell us, tell us what's been going on?
Uh, well, I'm gonna let you talk.
Okay, well, all right, uh, yes, we actually just purchased the home, um, built it from the ground up, so we're very proud, you know, of that, but, uh, yeah, close on July fourteenth. You know, so, and it's, it's something that we have been wanting for years. Uh, we wanted our little five bedroom home and we finally got it, so we're super excited about it. But this is something that we have been just very, very proud, you know, to say that we finally got it done and God is good.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Jerry, for you?
For me?
You had to put it down.
Well, I mean, she, you know, she said what she said. No, but, uh, you know, everything has been great, you know, um, you know, we do, you know, just like I said, we, we have been doing things with the home, you know, getting that done. It was a really good, um, it was a really good experience, you know, to see it from the ground up. You know, she was coming out here like every day, so.
Every day.
You know, we, we saw it literally from frame to finish. And, uh, yeah, it's, it's been a good thing, you know, um, you know, just, yeah. And, you know, investing different things like that, working with the VA and all that good stuff, you know.
So you guys decided to build your home in South Atlanta in, um, Henry County, is that right?
Yes, yes. Well, one of the major factors, uh, was the school district. Um, you know, we were in Henry County, we've been down in Henry County now for what, about seven?
For a while now. Eleven or twelve, something like that.
Since twenty eleven, so we've been down here for a while. Um, and, you know, we're just in a different part of Henry County. But, uh, you know, we, we, um, you know, noticed some changes in the area that we were in. So we just decided to move to the area that we're now in because the school system is so much better. And, uh, you know, as you know, we have a couple of kids that are still in school, um, so that's very important to us.
Okay, young kids, older kids?
Young, uh, nine, fourteen, um, we have other kids, but they're.
They're grown. Grown and out of the house, yes.
So get them all out and keep it a train, right? But, I mean, that, your value, quality of life, you love it in Henry County, you.
Oh, yeah.
You live, play and work here, right?
Absolutely, uh, especially since, you know, working from home, so, you know, get to enjoy working from the brand new home. So, so, yeah, we, we, you know, yeah, we definitely love it, um, you know, shout out to TOP, Tabernacle Praise. And Pastor TJ McBride, bless God for Shanae McBride being back in the house. So, yeah, you know, we definitely, uh, we, we, we love our time here, uh, we love our time in Henry County, the experience, the nature. You know, some folks can see the, the insects that I've posted since we've been out here and big huge spiders that I've never seen before. Something else, I didn't realize there was a, a certain fly that eats other flies that looks like a wasp or a natter. But anyway, you know, good stuff, good stuff, good stuff, nature, I, I love nature.
We love Henry County though, yes. It's home now.
Yeah, this is definitely home.
Go to church at Tabernacle Praise, one of the pastors TJ McBride and First Lady McBride. Since they've been here, I mean, they've grown a community that they, um, very, a, a different way, I would say. Accustomed to what Henry County and, um, McDonough is known for, right?
Yes, I would definitely say that, I definitely would say it's brought a lot of diversity. Um, it's brought a lot of change in a positive way. Um, you know, he's been able to unite with some of the other churches in the area, uh, black and white. It's not just a, about a color thing, that's one of the things I love about being here. Um, you know, the mayors, um, they're all in connection, you know, in contact with each other. Uh, it's just really good, it's just whole, it's just a really good setup, um, and you could tell it's genuine, it's really genuine. Nobody's perfect, but it's, there's a difference when you go, um, you know, you, you go different places and you see the genuine spirit that is in someone's and their genuine passion for what they do.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, uh, Tabernacle Praise started, I believe, I heard Pastor McBride say six people in the living room. And now it's like over thousands of people.
A lot of people, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In like, what, ten years, thirteen years?
I think in, uh, the, the church started in two thousand and five. Two thousand and five, yeah, yeah, we joined in twenty fifteen. And we did, we did, and we just went to, well, actually, we, we, uh, we were talking to people and just people from different circles. And when we got to the third person that suggested that we visit the church, and we were like, okay, hold on. Maybe we should go and try this church out. And we went and literally the first day that we went, it was like, okay, yeah, this is it, this is home, this is our church home, yeah.
You sing on the praise team, right?
Yes, yes, I sing on the praise team there. Um, yeah, I think, uh, I believe they just celebrated their seventeenth anniversary, I think it was seventeen, sixteen or seventeen. I'm lost, kind of, I'm, I'm, I'm just here. So, yeah, um, yeah, it's, um, yeah, I've been singing on the praise team honestly since, uh, we got here, like I said, back in twenty fifteen. Um, and enjoy my time doing it. Definitely have had some really good experiences, made some really good relationship, um, you know, um, taken us to another level under David Walker. Um, you know, and just, just everything that we've seen, you know, Kim Maxwell, when she was there, taking us to the, you know, taking us in higher places, and, uh, then when David came in, it just, you know, it just went even further from there, you know, um, God is good, you know, got some quality people that I've been working with.
Okay, now, you, you sing, like, are you an artist that, like, like does your own thing, go out and perform and do that type of thing?
I mean, I don't.
You have in the past?
People ask me to sing at weddings. You know, even funerals or, you know, just, just a regular Christmas, whatever, you know. Uh, so I have done it in the past, yeah, I have.
Okay, and Kim, what about you? What got you excited about the church? Was it that? I mean, your kids, I mean, dad seemed to kind of get involved and get, go straight to work.
He actually is more of a, I'm gonna jump right in type of person, so, which is great. I'm not like that, uh, so it took me a little while, you know, to find, um, you know, uh, my place. Um, but, uh, I work mostly with the children, I love children, you know, they are just, they're precious. And, um, I just, um, I think I started off in the nursery and now I work with the mine ministry, you know, I'm, I'm the director over the mine ministry. So it's just, um, it's just the children, I have a passion, you know, to work with them, because they're just, they're just so great. You can, you know, just, to be a part of their upbringing and, you know, to be able to look at somebody go from, you know, ten years old to fifteen to twenty and, and you can just look at them and just be so proud of the person that they became, you know, so. Yeah, but that's, that, that, that's pretty much where I stand with that. I don't sing or anything like that, you know, but I work with the babies and so, with the kids, I'm good.
She actually can.
I cannot. I cannot.
But she won't?
I cannot, that is why I work with the children, you know.
I called a singer before, Pastor TJ McBride, David Walker, I called a singer before, see, I'm gonna put you on blast.
I cannot sing.
She, she doesn't, um, like to.
No, no, I cannot hold a note at all.
Maybe in the mirror, in the shower.
Exactly, or in my car while I'm by myself, you know what I'm saying, where no one can hear me sound horrible.
Because she ain't Yolanda Adams, Kim Burrell, Whitney Houston or something like that, that she can't sing. But I've heard her sing, you can sing, dear.
Awesome, so it seems like you guys are pretty much engaged in the community. Tabernacle Praise, your home, you're, you're a veteran.
Yes, yes.
You're a veteran, and you work in the community.
I'm also a veteran as well, he's an army vet, I'm an air force vet.
Oh, wow, so you both have served your country? Outstanding citizenship. All right, and you go to Tabernacle Praise, live in Henry County, work, live, play, that type of thing. Um, Henry County, they get out a lot, where, you know, um, we have like the geranium festival here. Bring a new amphitheater, so it's kind of like a social area for people.
Yeah, it really, it's turned into that, it really is, and I'm, I'm kind of, I'm glad for the growth, you know, um, I, I always like to see progression. And, um, yeah, the, the amphitheater, that's something that just started, I believe, uh, it's, yeah, it's grand opening.
I'm excited about it. It's on my birthday, it's the twenty fifth.
Um, and, yeah, you know, when you look at that, you know, it kind of, it's kind of, it's kind of good to have, um, things closer where you don't have to travel to, all the way to Atlanta, not to, nothing wrong with it, because I love the city. But, I mean, being in Henry County, sometimes you don't want to drive so far. To have something just come up in the area like that, you know, I, I, I like that, I think it's pretty cool. Um, you know, some may feel differently and that's fine, but I appreciate it, I do, I really do.
We just interviewed the mayor of Stockbridge, Anthony Ford. Said, um, it's gonna be free parking at amphitheater. He's getting ready to spoil us on the side. Five hundred and thirty-two parking spaces, a hundred and few were from the amphitheater. We are gonna be spoiled in Henry County. So, we live, work, play here, I mean, that's a big thing, you know. Henry County is, uh, Henry County's demographic has, uh, actually changed. I mean, a lot of my friends don't even actually come down here because they say, oh, that's the good old boy county. Oh, I don't want to get pulled over, I don't want to get stereotyped. What is the difference between Henry County yesterday and today?
I actually want to speak on that, I will say this, um, now, I cannot speak as an African American man. I never will try to speak on, on, on their, your behalf, actually, you know. But, um, my encounters that I have had with the local police, McDonough, Henry County, have always been very pleasant, every time. Now, I don't get pulled over, you know, five times a week, you know, but just any encounter that I've had, you know, with them, you know, it's just, it's never been, it's never been what you see like on the internet and things like that, you know, um. I've seen where, um, one was aggressive and I was just like, ooh, oh my goodness, and I was just standing back watching him. But he was aggressive because of the situation that was going on, you know, where a guy just flipped over his car and everything, and the guy was like hysterical, so he was trying to get him to calm down and everything, but he wasn't like, you know, what I've seen, like I said, on, on TV. And he got him to calm down, and it's like I said, this is a white police officer with a young black guy, got him to calm down. And it just, you know, after that, they were both speaking to each other and talking and everything, like, you know, it's okay, it's okay, you know, and it wasn't, it, it just, it's just not what it used to be. From what I, from what I heard, because, yes, it used to be a good old boy, you know, type situation. And, um, I, like I said, just my personal, you know, experiences, I haven't seen that within the years that we've been here, you know, they've always treated me very respectfully, you know, black or white, doesn't matter, you know, so. I'm glad to say that I have not experienced that, I pray to God, I never experienced it, you know, but, um, yeah. I've, I've never experienced it and I'm glad, that, that, I told him, that's one thing that I'm happy about being here because I don't, I don't, I don't have to fear the police, if that makes sense. I don't have to fear the police, so that makes me feel good, somebody that's here to serve and protect, I actually feel safe with them around. So that's a good thing.
Shout out to Sheriff original, Sheriff original Skandrick, first African American sheriff.
And that could be why I feel so safe. You know, you know, yeah, shout out to, thank, thank you, thank you, and, yeah, because we voted for you. We did.
Also, a big shout out to Commissioner, um, Dee Clemens.
Yes, we voted for her as well, and that made me feel really good when I went there, and now that is something too. Uh, people were not happy, you know, on both sides, you know, you had people that were really happy, you had some that just were not. So it, I was glad that, I don't think anything jumped off after that, whenever they took it down. I don't, I don't, because I think they just removed it and put it somewhere else. They didn't destroy it or anything like that, you know.
Put it up, I don't think they destroyed, I think they have it aside or whatever.
Yeah, it's gone.
Symbol of what it stood for.
Exactly, it's gone, and that, that's what makes me feel good, I don't want anybody to feel like we're trying to take away their heritage or their, you know, um, their, 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 what, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, I, I don't know, if they're, let's just say that they are the descendants of that person, you know, and so they want to see that statue. Well, it's different for us, you know, so we don't feel pride when we look at that. So listen, we're not trying to take your pride from you, we're not trying to do that, but what we are trying to do is we're all trying to live happily together. So let's move him to a museum somewhere, okay? And you can go to that museum and visit him, how about that, you know, and when we're down there in the square, let's just look at the flowers and everything that they have there, and, you know, and, you know, be, be happy together, you know.
We are happier together, yes.
It was a time when black people were actually afraid to go to the square. Time where they didn't, like, it was almost like a boycott. You know, but now, um, Pastor McBride, uh, Reverend Lee, um, a lot of the elected officials, they have actually had rallies to support, um, systematic and social justice oppression in the square. So the game is changing.
Yes, absolutely.
In a diverse area. Now, one area, um, where Henry County seems to be struggling at is the Board of Education. Lot of differences on the Board of Education, so a lot of different things that go on. One thing that started here was the school to prison pipeline. Senator Samuel Jones was fighting that, where they had, uh, it was, you know, almost shown that a certain demographic of kids were being sent to ISS to be punished, um, more harshly than another group of kids. The education system was fine. And, and African Americans and minorities were moving out to Henry County due to the fact, hey, you can buy these nice houses. Get away from the city, you travel back and forth in the city in a, in a certain timeframe. But the education system was great, was great. But you had a system where they were taking young African American kids and pretty much molding them for the school to prison pipeline, did you guys hear about that? Or did you guys ever, you know, know about that?
No, uh, I honestly, I, I didn't. Um, you know, we, um, like I said, we've been down here about ten years now, uh, twenty eleven. So, um, thankfully, we never experienced that. I hate it for those that did. Um, and I'm not gonna take anywhere, anything away from that experience, because I know there's a lot of things that happened here before we got here. And that's why I am thankful for the changes that have taken place.
We probably would not have come if we would have heard that, to be honest with you.
Right, so what, what you were asking earlier, um, you know, when it comes to the differences and with us being a good old boy, um, county. I, I see where the connotation could come from. But my experiences as a black man, um, it has not been so traumatic. I've seen it, uh, there was a case, uh, that went, I believe, national, uh, I think it was with Desmond Mero. You know, this is a situation that really got out of hand. And it was around the time where a lot of other things were going on nationally, so that really pushed it into the spotlight. Um, but I noticed, um, you know, and again, shout out to TJ McBride and, um, uh, Charles Singleton and Andrea Boyd, and their law firm, and how they jumped on that, worked with the city to, um, get that situation resolved. And it, it did get it resolved in a positive manner. Um, on the flip side, you know, for folks to say they wouldn't move here because of the good old boy mentality. I did have a direct experience with police right in Fulton County. So, you know, it, it goes both ways. And honestly, there's no difference in, i- i- it's like the Atlanta area, it is what it is. You know, um, I think we were at, it was a event that, uh, me and my sister were working with. And, uh, we were in line, uh, well, we had came into the facility, we left out, came back in, and someone was asking a question, we already been checked, why we gotta get checked again? And I was like, well, you know, they gotta check us anyway because it could be, you know, they want to make sure we didn't go outside, get a bomb or something. Next thing I know, a police officer came up behind me so quick, put my hand behind my back and did this move right here. It was like, I'm sorry, you said bomb, you said bomb, I'm like, what in the world is going on? And I'm, yeah, it, it was, it was weird, you know, but I just, you know, honestly, I stayed calm, I'm just kind of looking at him, I'm crazy, like, are you serious right now? You said bomb, yes, I take my job very serious, I'm like, okay. And then he stopped, but the other police officers that were around saw it and they said, yeah, that wasn't cool. I, I, I'm gonna talk to my supervisor about that. So, you know, it's, there are good cops and then every bad apple, it, it is a bad apple in everybody. That's just, that just is what it is. You know, I don't care if you say you're for the blue or if you're trying to defund police or whatever you, whatever have you. You have good police and you have bad police. And you have good black people, you have bad black people, you have good white people, you have bad white people. There is no difference in people, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not trying to preach, but it's a spirit. And spirit is, i- i- it's, it's colorblind, you know, it doesn't care, well, per se, it doesn't care what color it, you are. When that spirit gets in you, hate, it doesn't care what color you are, hate is hate. And, you know, it'll, you know, attach a design or whatever, you know, it'll pick and choose what it decides to hate, you know, regardless of what color you are, I mean, it just is what it is, you know, so, you know, it's, it just really, it really, um, I, I like the way Henry County is moving right now, that's why we're still here, you know, we were thought, we're talking about moving to a different county.
Yeah, we were talking about moving to a different state at one time.
We were talking about moving to a different state and, um, basically, it was a situation where even though we saw what we saw, we liked what we saw. The more we look at it, the all-around picture, we always found ourselves coming right back to Georgia and then right back to Henry County. Moving to Kyle County, I, one time talked about moving to Douglas County, looked at possibly moving to Gwinnett. Short period of time, doesn't become, at the end of the day, we always came back to Henry County, and that's just, you know, our preference. Because of who we are and our lifestyle, so, you know, to each his own, but for us, I mean, it's been working out pretty well.
Been working out pretty well. Recently, going back to the Board of Education, you guys, COVID nineteen. Happening in the schools, we're all aware of the pandemic. People had to go, you know, to Delta area, is, uh, but I talked to two funeral homes this weekend. Both of them had at least ten bodies. At least ten. Wow. And you guys have kids in the school system. Henry County Board of Education, where they, they had a meeting one day. That turned into what looked like a Trump, uh, the Trump takeover.
Uh, yeah, it kind of.
Tell us about it, just tell us what happened.
Well, the whole purpose of going to the meeting is because when the, uh, when the school year started, masks were not mandatory. To be honest with you, when we went to, you know, the open house and everything, as we were looking in the classroom, we saw a couple of things, but we're thinking, okay, they're still setting up. But when the school year actually started, it was the same thing, whereas it, it looked like post-pandemic. There was no social distancing with the desk, there were no desk shields, and then on top of that, the mask mandate wasn't in place. So we're kind of looking like, what's going on? Because our daughter is nine and she's too young to get vaccinated. And, you know, certain people have their feelings about the vaccination, that's fine. Be honest with you, we just got to a place where we decided to go ahead and take the vaccination. So, you know, I'm not knocking anybody who's against the vaccination. Here's what I am saying, though, we all know that this thing is real. We all know that people have died to a tune of six hundred and twenty-three thousand plus. When you have that type of situation where you have children who can't put up a defense, I'm calling it artificial defense, whatever the case may be, um, when you have that type of situation, you would want to take all necessary precautions, you know, um, some feel as though, hey, natural immunity is better. Let the kids get it, or let us get it, and then we'll develop a natural immunity. Okay, that's fine, if that's how you feel, but your feelings should not affect how we live. Because, you know, I have asthma.
I have MS.
We have a nine-year-old, like I said. She can't get vaccinated, we also have her mother.
My mom is here.
Who is here, and, um, yeah, it's, it's not, you know, we, we have to be extremely careful. But, um, basically, they didn't mandate masks and immediately the cases started to take off. At like, all over Henry County, not just at our school, but it was all over Henry County. And, um, so this meeting was coming up and we were, um, on a social media platform, talking to a few other parents. And we said that we would show up for the meeting to, uh, speak to the board, to say, hey, let's mandate masks. We even did a petition, got well over seventeen hundred signatures, and I believe that was the thi- the thing that kind of, uh, uh, made it happen. Where before the meeting started, news broke that Henry County was mandating masks. So we get to the meeting and, you know, we figure out they're not letting anybody talk. At first, we were kind of upset, it was kind of like, you know.
We came here to voice our concerns.
And now you're telling us, basically, no, you can't talk, so.
Who actually said you couldn't talk, was it?
No, the Board of Education.
Yeah, 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 no, it definitely wasn't just us.
Other side that you were on, allowing anybody to talk. Didn't understand that completely at first, but then once the meeting took place, and, um, when I say there was aggression from the other side, from the pledge of allegiance until the time that we drove off the parking lot. And what we didn't like is how there were a couple of media outlets there. One in particular spun it to make it look like Kim was an angry black woman. You know, I mean, you know, that, that was, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so, you know, they, they sensationalized it for the other side. And it made them seem as though they were very calm and very composed, while we were just. And that's just not what happened. Um, as a matter of fact, it was in response, her reaction was in response to what was taking place. And if you see some of the videos from the folks who were actually there, you can see, and it's like, oh, I get it.
So that's what happened.
That's what really happened.
Cause it was like cell phone videos.
Yeah, it was.
Social media.
Right, right.
That actually showed the full.
Exactly, exactly what happened, because what, what happened was when the guy, whenever, what was it, the pledge of allegiance. Everyone stood up for the pledge of allegiance, we did not, a couple of other people around us chose not to, you know. And that's something that I have, you know, I tell my kids, if you don't want to at school, you don't have to, you know, but it's a personal choice, you know, and it's my personal choice. And the fact that, you know, I am a veteran, somebody who actually put her life on the line for this country. If I feel like I don't want to stand up, I don't have to. I just don't have to, you know, and regardless of it, even if you're not, just a regular citizen, if you don't want to stand up, you don't have to. But this man on the other side, you know, towards the end, when they noticed we weren't standing up, they're screaming the pledge of allegiance at us, that's what happened, right. And so when the pledge was over, they sat down, everyone, everyone sat down that was standing up. And this guy got really aggressive with Jerry. You know, and he's over there, next time, you better stand up and do. Now, the news station. Now, the news station didn't get that, now, there were two news stations there, I don't, hopefully you can edit this out if you don't want to mention any names or whatever.
Game Changes TV, we good.
We good, okay, so there was eleven alive that was there and there was CBS forty-six. CBS forty-six decided to put this spin on it as if I was up there just screaming at this little white girl and she's just like looking timid, you know, and everything. Well, what they didn't show was these people were threatening us, this girl was all out in the aisle coming towards me.
That's what the video showed on social media.
Exactly, but that's not what they showed on CBS forty-six. No, they didn't.
Videos that were on social media, really, even the cell phone footage.
Depicted exactly what happened.
Well, it honestly didn't even do it much justice for what was really going on, it was a pretty good idea.
I think they started recording after, when they saw it, yeah.
When they started looking like they was climbing the building.
Another thing too, um, with, with, okay, so they went, um, the, uh, what is it, uh, Henry County, they went to level four. So they couldn't allow in everyone that, you know, would normally be allowed in, because it's like, okay, well, listen, we're at level four. We, um, it, it's like limited seating now.
But kids can go to school.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm still talking about the meeting. I'm still talking about at the meeting.
Know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
No, I, I know where you're going, go ahead.
Yeah.
Protocol at the Board of Education meeting.
Masks.
Level four.
Yes.
Masks, desk shields and everything.
Yes.
Board of Education, yes.
Up there, it was up there, yeah. At, at, at their, at their podium, or whatever you want to call it, not podium, um, where they were seated.
Or at the, uh.
They had the dividers up, all that, but you don't have it at the school.
Interesting, very interesting.
Very.
I mean, but I will say this, I'm grateful that they did go ahead and mandate it.
Yeah.
Also, I understand, when that meeting took place, I completely understood now why they said, no, no one will be able to talk. They already knew the reaction that they were going to get.
Right.
When they, they couldn't even hardly get it out of their mouth.
Before they started screaming and everything on the other side.
Screaming and yelling.
Let us talk, let us talk.
Shame on you.
Yeah.
You know, you're muzzling our children and you don't take away our rights and all this other stuff and seventeen seventy-six. It, it was crazy, like, you know, to the point where they took a brief recess, got up, walked out, and they told the deputies, the deputies let us know, they fear for their lives.
Yeah, the deputies actually escorted them to their cars, because they fear for their lives.
They fear for their lives.
That's what one of the police told us.
Henry County Police.
Yes, that, that's what one of the police officers said, that they, because we were, we were wondering where they were, you know, were they still in the building?